...cost, most notably retirement costs and the likes. The purpose of this first budget study session is to give you a general overview of the general fund budget for the upcoming year, to elicit from you interested areas that you may have that you'd like us to explore further, to sort of set the stage for the general fund for the upcoming budget study sessions, outlining the challenges that we face and the initial strategies that your staff is recommending to balance the budget and to the extent possible, maintain services. At the close of today, we'll go over the schedule for the upcoming study sessions and then ask from you any areas in particular you'd like us to explore further that we may not have planned on but which you'd like to get into, so we can have the time to prepare the information you might need. In the center of the stage today is going to be Bob Elliott, Director of Finance in particular, and Jason Bradford, who's our Budget Administrator. But feel free, in the course of the presentation, to ask any questions, to delve further. All of the managers are here today, representing all the various departments, the general funds, so if you have any questions, we'll be free to call on them as well.
Thank you. And the way that I'd like to do this is to go through the PowerPoint, pausing only if people have brief questions or explanatory questions, and then after the PowerPoint, to have larger questions, questions that will take us further, then to hear from the public, if any of the public wants to speak, and then to have a further discussion and comments from the council. So if that's okay with my colleagues, we'll proceed with Mr. Elliott.
Did you, did we receive cards for all communications?
Have not.
Okay.
Here comes one.
That's okay. Well, we'll accept them throughout the, throughout the presentation. We have three hours blocked. Mr. Najarian asked about the length. We have three hours blocked this morning. I've read the presentation. If we don't ask questions, he could get through it probably in 20 minutes. Then I assume that we'll have a longer discussion, depending on the wishes of the council. Tonight's sort of a 20,000-foot view, sort of an overview of what we're going to be having over the next month and a half, which will be much more in-depth. So the length will really depend on, on the people sitting up here, for the most part.
Madam Mayor, I have to leave at noon.
You have to leave at noon?
We'll get you out by noon.
Okay.
I'm Mayor Friedman. Members of the council, it's our pleasure to present the opening budget study session for fiscal year 2011 and '12. What we wanted to review today is go through our projected 10-11 results. That's the basis of which we developed the 11-12 budget and show you the 11-12 forecast. Then go through our challenges that we've gone through as a group. The executives have worked tirelessly, along with staff, budget staff, I'd like to thank. They put in a lot of weekends and a lot of evenings putting the numbers together for this year. Then we're going to go through our proposed reduction strategies. It's quite a bit different than we've done in past years, and we'll walk you through what our focus was with that. We'll go through the study session calendar and then ask for your direction. So in looking at fiscal year 10-11, where we are today, this is, our, our starting budget for 10-11 was $173 million. In that starting budget, we had assumed savings of 2.1 million. Now, what's the 2.1 million? That was what we had, the net amount that we had put in for savings from concessions of the employees that didn't materialize. So that really got us down to the $173 million adopted budget for both revenues and expenditures. Some of the things that we had built in for the 10-11 budget was the one-time closeout of the Police Augmentation Fund. That was $3 million. So we basically take that out, that'll be close to fund balance for use, and we'll talk about that further. Some of the adjustments that we would make, looking towards the end of this year, is reduction in our property tax and sales tax by slight amounts, small reduction in our utility users' tax. We've actually upped our expectation of building permits slightly. We reduced our interest earnings in the general fund because our interest rates keep falling. And I believe Mr. Baruchy will be giving you reports very quickly on that. Also, our charges for services are down a little bit, and we've also appropriated an additional $65,000 for the Cable Access Fund. Our assumed hiring freeze and M&amp;O savings for this year are still trending to about $7 million. So all said and done, in our 2010-11 budget, we should, should come in with a little bit of a surplus, about $1,005,000. Moving on to the 11-12 budget, what was our focus for this year? Again, as we've discussed in previous years, our focus has been to reduce the cost of services and not necessarily the services, and you'll see that as we move on into the discussion. We want to continue implementing our strategies for cost reduction and consolidation. Some of those under that heading would be our joint operations with other cities, such as the helicopter operation, our Verdugo communication, and our new data system sharings with Burbank. Outsourcing, we've outsourced our employee health services is one example. Further negotiate cost reductions and cost sharings with our employee groups. All of the employee groups are being negotiated, as you know, except for the firefighters, excuse me. And looking, continue to look at alternative service delivery models, such as the police's area command structure and expansion of the basic life support paramedic model.
I'm sorry, the police what? What was it again?
Area command structure.
That program came out of the '09-'10 budget year, at a time that we were eliminating seven police officer positions. Chief DePampa proposed a restructuring of the way that the resources are allocated in the community to what's called an area command structure, where each area of the community has its own command structure that's responsible for everything within that area.
And there was a cost attached to it? And was there?
Actually, it was a way to, it was a way to more effectively utilize resources, especially with the utilization of data information, so that in effect, we reduce costs by the elimination of positions. But the goal was to maintain or improve service levels through a different way of delivering services.
Okay. We will be reviewing these individual funds?
Yes, we'll be taking, we'll be taking up each department individually. So what you're seeing here is, is the summation of everything. We have a study session or more scheduled for all the major departments to go into it in detail.
Some of the 2011-12 challenges that we're incorporating and looking at this year is the loss of the $4.2 million water transfer to the general fund. Council recalls back in February, opinion of the city attorney's office was that that transfer would no longer stand up to a 218 challenge. So we factor that reduction into the budget, although we'll talk about a potential mitigation to that. Our PERS rate increases. We'll show the chart and the actual numbers in a minute. Our PERS rates obviously are going up. It's approximately $5.2 million in the general fund, prior to cost sharing that we have in place of about $1,002,000 with the employees. We've talked in the past about our internal service funds. There are still increases in the rates that we charge back to all the user funds. Primarily, those are workers' comp and employee benefit funds, and we'll, we'll talk about that a little bit more. Our goal is to get those funds balanced in six years. If you recall, that was a management letter comment from our external auditors this last year. So we've committed to trying to bring those funds out of deficits within six years. We continue to have recurring cost increases. We've negotiated, our broker for medical services has negotiated our medical rate increases of 8.9% composite. Some of the premiums for the different carriers are higher than that, some are lower, but overall composite rate of about 8.9% increases, which is fairly good considering some of the Anthem increases was proposing was up into the 20% and 30% mark. We'll show some graphs in a minute, but the revenue stagnation, the economy is, is starting to tick up a little bit. Our sales taxes, we've got some, some good news a couple of weeks ago on our fourth quarter sales tax. We bumped that up a little bit. It's starting to show some life and trending up a little bit. Our property tax, on the other hand, is basically flat, and we'll show you the charts on that. Lastly, the impacts of both federal and state fiscal conditions. The state continues to try and look to ways to balance their budget. A lot of that falls back to the local level. Same thing at the federal level, and their reduction of grants and the like to local agencies, and some of the hits we've taken in those reductions. So what are our PERS rates? We currently are 11.67 on our miscellaneous employees and 25.06 on our safety employees. Our rates that we have received from PERS for next year are 15.6 for miscellaneous and 30.3 for safety. For the first time, PERS has given us, they usually give you that your next year and then one year following, for the first time, they've given us two years forecasted out. Those rates could go up or down, depending on the employer, the return that PERS gets on their investments. They, they closed the year doing fairly well. Again, they assume 7.25% return on all their investments. The year that we're still being hit for was several years ago, when they had a negative 24% return, and you add the 7.25, so it was over 30% loss. They went down to, lost about $80 billion in their retirement assets, down to $160 billion. Their backup over $220 billion, and so they've recovered a great deal. However, a lot of those losses are being seen in the rates that they project forward. Additionally, another impact on our rates is they, they raised the life expectancy of PERS members. People are living longer. So they've raised in their actuarial assumptions, everybody to live another .9 of a year. Doesn't sound like much, but that has an impact on the rates of 3% to 5%, depending on the category.
Question.
Yes.
Is there anything happening in Sacramento to clean PERS out, reappoint people with new standards? I read all the time about the corruption, negotiating with people they've already, with agencies that they already have done business with. Millions of dollars lost, and we're being punished for, for what PERS has done with their membership. Is Mr. Brown, Governor Brown, looking at this at all, or he doesn't care?
Well, as I understand it, PERS has done a lot of, adopted a lot of new policies to eliminate the pay-to-play scenarios that they had for investment brokers. I understand they've cleaned that up. On the flip side, they're looking at, at the state level and the little Hoover Commission, a lot of alternatives on pension reform. There's a lot of stuff being floated out. I'm not sure how successful.
Including, including replacing the members of the board that are making these deals?
There are initiatives to, I'll call it rebalance the board, so it's not so dominated by union interests, and to establish ethics reform and practices, so that you don't have the folks who have served on the commission then moving into the private sector and essentially then benefiting by the contracts and relationships they established.
The people that got us in this problem are still there, right?
Well, some of them are still there. However, the problem that PERS has faced, and we've all faced, was a downturn in the market and the loss in a considerable portion of the principal of the investments. It was a mere eight years ago that Glendale was viewed as being super-funded, it was called, as were most agencies.
I remember those days, but at the same time, they're still taking their trips around the world by the companies that have been trying to deal with them. I want to know, those guys are gone.
I think you'll see a lot of initiatives in the upcoming years to reform both PERS and its method of operation. But in the long term, the, the implications of the loss in the marketplace are going to be with us for quite a while, and we're going to see them through the implications on rates for years to come.
Yeah, I can read that.
Question.
Yes.
PERS, is it a contractual agreement between the cities and PERS? And are those contracts negotiated city by city, or is it standard for everyone?
Well, you don't really negotiate the contracts. Options are made available to you. The negotiations are between you and the employee groups.
I'd like to know what options are available. Second, the, the PERS, the guaranteed PERS rate, is that guaranteed by them? Do we have any say on the, on the return that they're earning on their investment?
The 7.25% return is adopted by the PERS board. They take input from staff. As a matter of fact-
Can they raise it tomorrow and say, oh, well, we expect to get 10% this year?
Let's be clear, it's not a guaranteed return. It's, it's an assumption, as they do their actuarial analysis of the, of the-
Who decides that?
The PERS board decides that.
Do we have a say in that?
No, you, I mean, you can always, you can always give them input, but no, we don't control what the PERS board controls it, so-
Because that directly affects the, the dollar amount that we're paying.
It, it affects the rates-
Based on their actuarial numbers?
It affects the rates to the actuarial assumptions. So for example, if they decide to acknowledge the increased lifespan, that gets factored in, that affects your rates. If they acknowledge a lower or higher assumed rate of return on their money, that'll affect your rates. But also, what affects your rates is what they actually experience. So if they're above or below their assumed rates, if people in your group actually live longer or less, that'll ultimately affect your rates through the actual experience. One of the processes they used, though, and they adopted this after the downturn, was what's called smoothing. Used to be, they'd look at three years' experience to adjust your rates. Now they look at, is it 15 years?
They smoothed, excuse me, they smoothed it out over a much-
It used to be one, one year, actually. They changed it to three years.
I recall.
And then, and then they changed it to the new-
Now it's a very long term, which means any, any changes in actual experience that benefit you will take it longer for you to experience that, in the same way downturns will take longer for you to experience it.
Considering the chart that you have up there, how, are those realistic numbers? Safety, 32-36, miscellaneous, 17% to 20%?
By realistic, you mean?
What are they based on? Are they based on their, the PERS actuarial numbers?
These are P E R S expectations of what our rates will be.
And those will be adjusted as we move forward, based off, there's, in these numbers, there's a lot of assumptions. There's many, many actuarial assumptions built in in there. One of those is COLAs, COLAs granted to the employees. We haven't done that for the last several years.
Yeah.
So that would have an impact, downward impact on our rates. The other side is the, the expected return and the actual return of, of PERS. If they exceed the 7.25%, those rates would tend to go down or be flatter over time with the smoothing.
Can, can we get the actuarial numbers from PERS?
We get the report every year. I can-
Okay, if you can email it to me, I'd appreciate it.
I think the other thing that would be useful is, we probably won't have time between now and when you have to adopt the budget, but sometime shortly after adopting the budget, invite John Bartels, who is the actuarial consultant that we utilize to question and evaluate the figures that we get from PERS. He is probably the most prominent actuary in the state of California now. You'll see him at many conferences, on panels. To have John come down and talk to you about the, about P E R S and rate setting and the assumptions and the implications for us of all of these things. He's very knowledgeable. He has a great way of putting it into layman's terminology, so, so even us laypeople can understand it. We might have him come down and spend a study session with you to go through it. It's very informative.
One other thing I may mention is, just recently, PERS, PERS staff had recommended to the PERS board that the assumed rate of return be lowered to 7.5%, down from 7.25%. The board turned that down. Why, I'm not exactly sure. I had been to a couple of webinar, participated in a couple of webinars, where it seemed that was a for-sure thing, but they didn't do it. We'll see what the, the net result of that is. I can tell you, PERS has, has done much better. I think they, they were 11% as of last time I looked, so they're doing quite well on their assumed returns. But that's, that's an important thing, and what's built into the actuarial assumption is the assumed rate of return. Years ago, they used to have 8.25. They reduced that to 7.25. So that's a, depending on, on how they build into their actuarial assumptions, that will affect our rates long-term.
And my observation of why they didn't, didn't reduce the rate is because the rates are also so terribly high that they'd get more pressure from the agencies. So a reduction in the assumption would raise these rates to all the agencies. So I think those of us who've watched it assumed they didn't adopt the revised rate, because it would have put more pressure on these rates to the member agencies.
Important point also on, on our PERS rates, it's basically two years in arrears, so the, so the increases we're seeing in 11-12 really reflect the reductions in the investment returns from a couple of years ago, when, when we lost, or when PERS lost a lot of money. So there's always a, a real delayed impact in our PERS rates, based off what their finances are. So historically, we just wanted to show what, what our PERS rates have been, went back to 1985-86 fiscal year, and you can see the declines. Those were times when the stock market and other investments were doing very well, and PERS actually allowed, as Jim alluded to, for agencies to go super-funded, meaning there wasn't an employer contribution to PERS. It was reduced to zero, and that's the flat line you see for several years.
Under the revised CalPERS policies, agencies would no longer be allowed to go to a zero contribution rate.
Correct.
Though even, even in those periods of time when maybe you're super-funded, you'd always be obligated to make a contribution to your account in PERS. As John Bartels would tell you, the actuaries look at the PERS rates and costs in geologic terms. So periods of high return, their view is, over a long enough period of time, are always offset by corrections in the marketplace.
One thing to note, too, is when agencies did get to the superfunding, is about the same time the enhanced benefit plans were introduced at the state level and passed. Those were the 3.50 and 3.55 for safety, and for miscellaneous, it was the 2.5, 2.7, and 3% at 60. It was very common, when everybody was super-funded, for negotiations to occur that, that basically on the premise that they could give increased benefits because there was, they were super-funded, i.e. you wouldn't have to, to pay for it, and obviously, that was not the case. And you can see the straight, the, the large increase on the chart is basically when the enhanced benefit plan rates kicked in, and the city was back to paying 25% for safety and about 10% for miscellaneous. The projected amounts are the ones off to the far right, or the orange. You can see if those rates hold true, by '13-'14, we'll be paying historically high rates for both miscellaneous and safety. Sales tax history, we want to walk you through a little bit of sales tax history to show you what the trend has been. And bear in mind, the, the purple colored on the chart reflects the history of the sales tax, when the city put 50% of the sales tax in the capital improvement fund. And keep that in your mind as we go through further study sessions and talk about the CIP. That amount's dwindled over time. In '03-'04, council reduced the amount from 50% down to 14%. And that continued on for a long time. In '09-'10, we reduced that, 10% down to 4%, and that's the small 1.1 million that went into the CIP. Last year, we reduced that to zero. So there's no sales tax going to the CIP fund at this point in time, and hopefully, that'll be restored in the future. But even so, you can see the, the blue bar is the, the sales tax in the general fund, and where it's starting to slowly trend up, we're still considerably below our, our historical high of '07-'08, when we were over $30 million in sales tax. Property tax, you can see the trend over time, where we had a lot of increases, and frankly, for the last, practically four years, we've been flat outside the dip in, in '09-'10. Our, our property tax has virtually been flat. Assess valuation went down for the first time last year, had a negative CPI. Under the Prop 13 model, we're capped at 2% CPI increase over, for existing properties and anything that's sold is, is placed at market value for assessments, and then enrolled into the, the return. City of Glendale, out of every property tax dollar, gets about 13 cents. The remainder goes to the county, flood control district, and a lot of different other agencies. So that 13 cents that we get is represented in the $26 million. So you can see, we're, we're projecting a little bit over this year, about $100,000 Again, to, to look at the federal and state issues, some of the federal grants that could indirectly affect the general fund, CDBG, I think was reduced 16.5%. We, we have, are looking at reductions in WEA and some other federal, federal grants. So those could indirectly impact the general fund. Certainly, the redevelopment proposal by the state to end redevelopment could affect not only the, our employees and the number of folks, but really having fund, funds for development of the downtown and other areas, as well as affordable housing.
We should, we should note there that the redevelopment agency also picks up its share of general overhead. So indirectly, the general fund could be impacted because a portion of the costs of general fund operations, city council, city manager, city attorney, are indirectly supported by the redevelopment agency. It's proportionate share. So an end to that program means you have less space to spread your overhead costs and all the other funds, and have to pick up a proportionate share.
Other things that could affect us-
Sorry, how much, how much of that, of the redevelopment funds going to general fund for supportive services, again? Do you have an idea?
I don't know offhand.
We could look it up. I don't have it off the top of my head. Just to further talk about that, the overhead, as, as Jim's referring to, is our formal cost allocation plan. We developed that a couple of years ago. It's, it's a very intricate program that we do at the first start of the budget, and we distribute the costs of the internal service departments to all the different funds and functions, including the general fund. And that, we'll talk about that when we talk about the cost of service study in a later study session, but that's a basis for determining what our overhead costs are. Lastly, the state cuts that could affect us, for example, early release of prisoners, what that impact that may have on our local police department, as well as other services that either are passed down or eliminated from the county that was previously state-funded. So moving on to, excuse me, moving on to the 11-12 general fund, the approach we took this year was considerably different than we've done in the past. The last two years, or since I've been here, and I think prior to that, was looking at just a straight percent cut and how to attain that from each department. This year, we had each department go back and, and put their, organize their departments into distinct functions or programs. And to do that, so we could look at what those programs did and what the service levels were with those programs, and then we met with every department multiple times, budget team in each department, and then we met as an executive team multiple times, to basically go through and, and rank all those programs and functions to determine if they were essential, priority, or discretionary. And within those rankings, we then have proposed how to reduce our budget gap and look at those reductions based off the, the priority of the general fund as a whole. Other things we've done for this budget year is we contracted with Willdan and Associates to complete a cost of service study, and we'll present that at, at a study session, I believe, on May 10th. That's a real important factor in when we look at various fees and what the cost for providing those services are. We're going to continue to look at operational consolidations. One of note that we've done is the fleet, fleet operation. We had, previously had four different garage operations that operated all independently. That has been consolidated under Public Works to try and promote, promote efficiency, and doing more with less in terms of, of cost containment and the like. Again, change in service delivery model. We talked a little bit about the area, area policing and the BLS approach for, for paramedic services, so we're going to continue to look at those. Again, outsourcing like EHS, we're, we're looking at additional outsourcing. And continuing our tri-city efforts to do joint programs, like we've done with the helicopter. Verdugo Communications is a good example. That's been in place for, for about 30 years. And recently, our new data sharing arrangement that we have with Burbank to, for backups. Little bit of history to bring everybody back. In '08-'09, we eliminated 39 full-time positions in the general fund. In '09-'10, we eliminated another 37, over 37 full-time equivalents. We also transferred 25 to the fleet fund that I just mentioned. We had some employees within the general fund, others in GWP and such. We've moved the general fund piece out in- We've moved the general fund piece out into Fund 601, which is the fleet fund. And then we charge back to all the user departments.
Did you say fleet? What kind of fund is it again?
Fleet fund, it's all the vehicles and equipment. So we've consolidated that into one central operation for all the mechanical maintenance and purchase of all the vehicles and equipment. '10, '11, this year, we've eliminated another 5.6 FTEs. On top of that, we transferred a lot of, I think about 20 individuals, back to the general fund for the purpose of the cost allocation model. I spoke about that a little bit ago. That basically is to identify those costs and allocate those back out.
What are the total number of city employees, full-time employees?
Full-time is about...
Approximately?
Eighteen hundred?
Eighteen hundred.
It's nineteen hundred and three as of 2010.
We've eliminated about 100 positions in the general fund. What will show as full-time positions will be all the positions that any one time that are frozen through the hiring freeze. And that runs between 70 or 80 additional positions that are vacant and frozen, but it'll be reflected as actually being authorized in the budget.
So moving on to, back to...
I'm sorry, what do you mean reflected as authorized in the current budget?
Means...
Are there dollar amounts attached to them?
Yeah, the dollar amounts are attached. They're authorized in the budget, but departments are not authorized to fill the positions. As a result, if they hold throughout the entire year, you have a savings at the end of the year.
Who authorizes, the department head authorizes for...
Any authorization for frozen position has to come through my office. Yasmin Beers oversees it, and departments have to justify any position that's filled.
Going back to 2010, '11, just to reiterate what our projections are for the end of the year, we're going to be projecting 162,642,000 for revenues and 166 million for expenditures. Our starting point for the 11, 12, we build off what we think the actual base is going to be on the revenue side, again, 162 million. And we're making adjustments to that actual amount to get to our projected revenues for 11, 12. So some of the adjustments that we've plugged in for the 11, 12 forecast is 440,000 for property tax and the vehicle license fee backfill, which is actually a property tax. And so we record it in that. Sales tax, we bumped that up considerably by 875,000. We're trending our utility users tax up a little by 215,000. Some of our other revenues, fees and such, up to 500,000 last year. Structural change that we're proposing or making in 2011, '12 is the GYA Glendale Youth Alliance. That has been within, inside, operating within the general fund. It's really more appropriate from an accounting structure to have that at a special revenue fund. So we're subtracting that base out, both on the revenue side and the expenditure side. And we'll show that when we go through expenditures. Transfers, reductions in transfers. The water fund, we talked about that. We pulled out the 4.2 million in terms of revenue sources, transfer from the water fund. And last year, as a revenue strategy, we had transfers back from the information systems department, internal service funds, and the fleet fund. And we pulled those out and part of the revenue base, and we applied them to the expenditures this year. So those were just one-time transfers back as a subsidy to the general fund for those operations. Bottom line is, our 11, 12 projected revenues is 162,757,000. Going to the expenditure side, we start at what our adopted budget was, was 175 million. If you recall from the previous slide, we had assumed 2.1 million dollars. We've added that back into the starting picture of the 175 million. The projected increases in the different categories and salary and benefits, you recall GCA had a 1.5% salary reduction imposed on it last year, so that's reflected in this lower number. PERS increase, we talked about the increase there, that's the 5.2 million. And we've left the assumed cost sharing of PERS amounts from the employees for a net increase of about 3.4 million. Our internal service fund rate increases, primarily in workers' comp. That fund has a $17 million deficit as we reported in the '09, '10 fiscal year. We don't know what it will be this year. I suspect it will be a little bit better. Our vacation sick leave in RHSP funds, we've raised the rates to those. They've been underfunded for years and...
What is the RHSP again?
RHSP is the retiree health savings plan. When somebody retires, we convert their vested sick leave at a dollar rate, usually around $30 an hour, and that's paid into a post-retirement medical account for the employee. That was bargained for several years ago. And then our medical, dental, and vision insurance, again, composite increase of about 8.9%, so that is built into those rates as we charge back to the department. Our liability insurance, we've reduced that. That's primarily based off recoveries that we're getting from the water fund for the landslide costs. They're actually paying some of those previous losses from the '05 landslides, which were attributable to the water fund. So that actually has an impact in reducing the cost to the general fund. Spoke a little bit about the maintenance and operation of the fleet fund. And last year, we took one-time transfers back from those to subsidize the general fund. This year, we've basically reduced the rates that they charge, so it's on the expenditure side, so it lowers our expenditures. So that brings that category to actual reduction of 1.9 million dollars. And then again, the structural change of pulling the GYA out, we come up with a projected expenditures of 180 million.
What is the GYA?
Glendale Youth Alliance.
And what are we pulling out in terms of structural change?
We pulled out the, both the revenues and expenditures, and we're going to put that in a special revenue.
Was that part of our general fund?
It has been.
Let me comment on that. The GYA has been in the general fund, both the revenues it raises and its expenditures. The view is, that program's supposed to be self-supporting. When it's in the general fund, there's a tendency, if they don't raise enough revenues, to frankly have it get all mixed up in the general fund and not be able to acknowledge whether they're making more or making less. So this pulls them out and puts them into an enterprise?
Special revenue.
Special revenue fund, where their expenses, their revenues will all be tracked separately from the rest of the general fund.
And it's costing us 1.7 million dollars a year?
It comes out on both sides. The expenditure is 1.7, the revenues on the revenue side also come out. So it's really a...
How much are the revenues on the revenue side?
1.6. Revenues were a little bit less only because they had some carryforward fund balance that they were tracking on the side. So there's a little discrepancy, but it's virtually a wash.
And that's a reason to track this separately, though. They really need to be self-supporting in the general fund. You won't be able to acknowledge if they're $100,000 off. It may not seem like much, but in a tight budget like this, it's a lot of money, it's a position. So they really should be tracked separately and not co-mingled with the general fund. That's what this does.
So again, that brings us to 180 million in projected expenditures. If we pull our estimated resources and our expenditures together, we start our general fund budget with an $18 million gap. So some of the strategies that we have looked at and discussed at length in our different study groups with the execs in the departments, one item was to propose was to increase the transfer from electric. Now, let me talk a little bit about that. In the Water Nexus study that was done, when we looked at the water transfer to the general fund and ultimately determined that that amount shouldn't be transferred back to the general fund, the study also looked at all the cost structures within GWP. Part of that came back and said, a lot of the common costs between both electric and water, a lot of that should be shifted over to water, approximately $2 million. So electric will then have $2 million less in common expenses, which have been transferred to the water fund, thereby having us propose to increase the electric transfer by 2 million. So the electric fund really is no net impact in terms of what their total costs would be.
And recall, the water fund had the relief of no longer making the 4.2 million dollar transfer to the general fund. So at this point, it's still 2.2 million dollars ahead of the game. The water fund carries its appropriate portion of the overhead costs that GWP used to allocate between the two funds. Water should have been carrying a greater proportionate share of GWP's costs. The electric fund is then relieved of its obligations, the tune of 2 million dollars. And as a result, we've shown here the ability to increase the transfer by 2 million dollars and have it remain neutral on its impact on GWP.
The next item is the use of fund balance from the police augmentation fund.
We are going to be looking at GWP and water funds individually.
Yes. Yeah, there'll be a separate study session, and we'll talk about that when we go to the calendar. The use of the police augmentation, what happened was, if you recall, I guess many years ago, the council agreed to set up a special police augmentation fund, special revenue fund, that was designed to allow the city to hire 100 new officers.
Yeah, let me interject. It was, the ultimate long-term goal was 100. The first phase was 25, and we never moved past the first phase. So we implemented Phase 1, which was 25 more police officers and I think 11 support personnel.
12.
12. We never got past Phase 1. We could never find a means of funding the additional positions. So this fund was actually reflective of 25 new officers and 12 support staff.
So this fund primarily existed on transfers from the general fund. So we made the decision...
I'm sorry, there was a special fund for that additional?
Let me back up a minute. We set up a separate fund to monitor this. Initially, when the fund was set up, we found a number of places from which we could take savings and put it into this fund. And as I recall, it was in the neighborhood of $10 million or so that we started the fund with. Because the general fund at that time couldn't afford to hire 25 more police officers and 12 support staff. So we said, we'll find savings from a number of sources, put it in the augmentation fund, allow the augmentation fund to then hire the officers and the support staff. And it would draw down its reserves, its resources, to fund those costs while the general fund could increase its contributions to offset the costs. Eventually, you'd have a leveling where the general fund had absorbed all of the costs. This could take 10 years. The general fund had absorbed all of its costs, and you'd then take those people and ship them back to the general fund. Would give the general fund time to grow up to a level where it could support the costs.
Do we have a listing of which departments those savings were taken out of?
Yeah, we do. We provide that to you.
Okay.
Now, since then, we're at the point now where there's about...
What is the balance in the police augmentation fund currently?
About $3 million, which got transferred back into the general fund.
Correct.
And you're eliminating the police augmentation?
Right, we're eliminating the augmentation fund. The $3 million of its remaining balance got transferred back to the general fund. What this does is this says, well, let's assume that the fund continued to operate the way it would have, had we not folded into the general fund. And since there were $3 million in fund balance in the fund, use that up in the general fund, the tune of about $1 million a year. So don't utilize the whole 3 million, only acknowledge about $1 million of it. Then next year, you'd have another million, the next year, you'd have another million. Then at that point, there'd be no more of those resources from the augmentation fund. And that's what this million acknowledges.
What's the rationale of spreading that over three years?
Well, because it's really one-time money. My concern is, if you put $3 million of it in this year's budget, and then next year we still have a deficit, you won't have that $3 million again. It's just a way of drawing it down, essentially smoothing it, and acknowledging its use over three years instead of just one year. You could acknowledge it all in one year and utilize it, but then next year, you'll have $3 million in those resources you won't have to use. So you could make a decision, instead of 1 million, you could go up to $3 million. But then again, next year, if we have a deficit, that $3 million won't be there again. So it's just giving us some time and metering out these resources over three years instead of one year. Just a more conservative approach.
Essentially, we transferred the $3 million of remaining fund balance of the police augmentation in July 1st of this year. It came into the general fund as a revenue. So that'll get closed out to the general fund fund balance. And then this would, as Jim said, draw down $1 million of that fund balance that was transferred over, over the next three years to offset the increased costs of those 25 officers that came back to the general fund.
Now, I'll note, since the downturn, we have eliminated 17 police officer positions. So of the 25, if you look at it, of the 25 that we got on board through the augmentation effort, we've eliminated all but eight of those as a result of the downturn.
The next item is the security costs for utility assets. Again, that was another thing that came out of the Water Nexus study that was done this past year. What that is, is, excuse me, in discussion, Scott Howard came up and talked a little bit about this. Basically, this is charging, charging off costs of the police and fire department, which are not part of our normal cost allocation to GWP, primarily for threat analysis, homeland security costs that they incur, because utility assets are typically high-value targets, and what those costs would be. We have yet to quantify that, but we put 250,000 in there as a placeholder for potential resources.
We should note, the consultant identified about a half a million dollars in costs they thought we could justify. We've cut that in half because frankly, we're rather dubious about our ability to fully justify that. So even with this, I'd put a question mark beside it. We still have to go through the analysis. We have to look at the amount of police costs that are actually consumed in security for the water system. So we've taken a very conservative approach. I think this number still needs to have a question mark put beside it. I think it's probably one of the weakest components of our strategies.
Excuse me, potential fee increases, we've plugged in 1.3 million dollars. Frankly, that number could go a lot higher. We had a study done by Willdan, a cost of service study to identify our true costs in providing specific services for, as a user fee for members that come and get those services from, from the city. So what those could be, we'll talk about. We'll have them present the results of that study for you at one of the upcoming study sessions.
We should note, they identified about 18 million dollars in increased fees. Many of those frankly aren't practical. For example, their fee allocations in the library, I think they had upwards of $5 million in potential fees the library could charge in recovering costs. First off, our charter requires that our libraries be free, so that's not very practical to think that we could be charging for books being taken out. And there's just a practical reality of how far politically a council would be willing to go in establishing fees for recovery. So we've tried to keep this at a very realistic level. We think we could probably go beyond a million three, but we think a million three is very practical and realistic for cost recovery.
Do you have anything in mind in terms of...
For these, principally in the planning and building arena.
You're going to make people build more?
No, no, no. Make people, have the planning department recover more of its costs for people who do come in and file subdivisions and applications for building.
Are we seeing an increase in housing starts at this point?
Well, I wouldn't say housing starts. We're seeing an increase in development, yes. And in fact, we began to see it last year, and it's continuing, we continue to see it going into this next year. And you've seen it in the projects around town, everything from Broadway lofts to the applications that you've considered. So, yeah, we think, we think this next year will be a time when we will have bottomed out and begin to gradually move back up economically, both in terms of revenues as well as building activity. So it's a good sign, but it's a question of how gradual is the, is the recovery going to be? And we think it's going to be pretty gradual.
And any fee increases will have to come with council for approval?
Oh, yes, yes. In fact, we're going to bring the whole study to you in a study session, so you can overview the entire study and all the proposals. And then, of course, any increases will need to come back to you separately.
Because I remember we've done many fee increases over the past few years.
Done many fee increases over the past years, that's right.
And the goal here is to recover the costs that doing that permitting incurs to the city. So it's not to just say like, let's just arbitrarily start charging people money to raise revenue. There's hard costs associated with all of these, with all of these permanent, fees and permits.
That's why you've seen, we've taken a very small proportion of what the consultant viewed as the potential as actual, because we know your philosophy is very conservative when it comes to cost recovery and fees. So we've tried to take the same approach here.
One thing to note on that is, is part of any fee, it has to be reasonable and... One thing to note on that is, is part of any fee, it has to be reasonable and based off actual amounts. What the fee study does is actually go through and identify what costs are attributable to providing those particular services. As you said, we just can't set a fee at whatever we want. It's got to be based off a reasonable cost. And what the study does is identify both direct and indirect costs for those services, whatever they may be. So you'll get a fully burdened hourly rate for employees that are working on those, and then that could potentially roll into whatever fee we choose to set for those particular services. So again, we'll have a very in-depth study session component on that. Weldon will be here to present those findings for you. And then we'll have that discussion as we go through. The various departments can present what they would want to bring to you as a potential fee increase.
Let me ask a question, if I may, Madam Mayor. In terms of the fee increases, you're including it in 2011, '12 budget, and that's in a couple of months. For the fee increases to come to council, to be approved, study sessions and all of that, are you expecting the whole thing to be incurred or to be generated during the '11 and '12 year? Because you don't have those fee increases, you have to do the study sessions.
They need to come back to you shortly after the 1st of the year for adoption. And we've considered they wouldn't become effective July 1.
And if not approved, then what would you do?
Then we're back to the budget again.
The last item on there is increase in the GRA loan repayment. If you recall, some of the actions taken back in January, when the threat to redevelopment was at its highest, one of the actions taken was repayment of the city loan to the agency. Currently, the agency pays about $3 million back to the general fund each year for the debt. That's primarily interest charged on that loan. So the $3 million comes back to the general fund now. Part of that was increasing the repayment schedule to $6 million and moving that out so we fully amortize and actually having a true amortization schedule of that loan going out to the end of the agency. That amount got increased to $6 million. Of that, we plugged in $1.5 million additional to the general fund and are proposing $1.5 million going to the CIP fund for funding that. Either one of those could be changed as we move forward.
Should note, that'll be one of the policy questions for you. As we prepared the budget, we've taken advantage of about half of the increased loan repayment in the general fund and have, I will recommend, that the other half of the $1.5 million go over into the capital improvement program. You could make a decision that you want to keep a greater or lesser proportionate amount of the loan repayment in the general fund and shift more or less of it over to the CIP. But here, we've assumed a 50-50 split in the increase in loan repayment with half benefiting the general fund and half benefiting the CIP.
So taking all those into account, that adds about $6 million in additional resources into the general fund to get us to $168.8 million. On the expenditure side, we started at our $180 million mark, and we've listed out a number of reduction strategies. A lot of those include, or those include the making the city views electronic, eliminating our hardware and software budgets within the general fund. Now, keep in mind, last year, we've implemented the internal service department, and we're charging the rate back to the general fund and all other funds for the cost of computer services. That includes software, hardware, as well as radios and wireless, BlackBerries and the such. So those rates are already embedded in the budget. Additionally, general fund departments, kind of a holdover from before, had software and hardware budgets that they really don't need anymore because that's all incorporated into the internal service fund rate from the information systems department. So we've pulled those out of the budget. We're proposing to reduce the paramedic fund costs. That's a standalone fund, but does have a transfer from the general fund, so we're proposing to reduce that. Nutritional meals, there's a transfer from the general fund to nutritional meals that has a solid fund balance at this point. So we're proposing to suspend that transfer to nutritional meals. Additional outsourcing, we've talked about some of those, what we've done with EHS. We're looking at other things in terms of outsourcing, employee concessions.
Nutrition meals, always that again? Could you repeat?
General fund contributes, there's a general fund contribution to the nutritional meals program.
Which is for the elderly?
This is a seniors program. A number of years ago, the nutritional meals program was always self-supporting through grants and payments by the participants. A number of years ago, we began to, the county began to reduce the amount of the grant, and the council's decision back then, which was, oh, this has probably been 10 years ago or so, was to have the general fund pick up the differences between the grant and the actual cost of the program. That has grown over the years.
And how much is it?
About $130,000, I think. It's about $130,000. The nutritional meals program, that was in a separate fund, and that fund, through savings, has built up a fund balance, a positive balance, which is about $250,000. So they have about two years where they can be self-supportive again and not rely on the general fund. So this proposes to take out the general fund subsidy and let that fund go back to being self-reliant for at least the next two years.
As we discussed earlier, obviously, some of the, one of the strategies is employee concessions through our bargaining efforts with the various associations. And lastly, we've actually built in some of our, excuse me, vacancy savings from the hard hiring freeze. At any one point in time in the general fund, there's 60 to 70 vacant positions. We hold those frozen. There's a value associated with those. There is ebbs and flows in that because we do have approval at times to hire particular key positions. Absent that, the positions become frozen and we don't hire them. We still budget them, and the monies, the budgeted amounts are in the budget. This is just part of the savings that we can recognize from those frozen positions. So all those come up to just over $7 million. Some of the other strategies include--
Can you put dollar amounts next to the individuals, when you get a chance, please?
Yeah, we will.
Thank you.
Some of the other reductions include, again, looking at other tri-city cooperations that we can. There's some thoughts that we can get some savings there. Expansion of the BLS model, that could save the general fund considerable amounts through attrition.
We will, the fire department will spend a considerable amount of time in its presentation to you going over the BLS model, of which we've utilized a financial consulting firm to, with the fire department, evaluate the economics of the program and the economics of the paramedic fund. I think that'll be a rather illuminating study session. This has far more long-term benefits potentially in cost savings than what you see reflected here, but this is anticipating implementation of the program. And then it takes two or three years for the program to be fully implemented if you do it through attrition, because it requires the elimination of a number of full-time positions and the hiring of a number of hourly positions to implement the full BLS model. And Chief Scoggins will go through that with you. This assumes a benefit of a half a million dollars here and a half a million dollars in reduced paramedic fund transfer in the upcoming year, which is about a half to a third of what its full potential could be.
We plugged in $400,000 in reduced contractual services. That's just basically elimination or reduction of other contracts throughout the various funds.
And we should note here, and I sent you a note on this a couple of weeks ago, we are forwarding to all of our contractors that have recurring contracts. Most of our contracts are for two, three, four years, and they have, in most cases, CPI escalators in them for renewal. We have sent notices to all of our contractors, whether in the general fund or non-general fund, notices that as we evaluate the continuation of those contracts, we want them to come back to us with proposals on ways by which they can reduce their contract amount. In the absence of that, we'll be evaluating whether or not we should go out to bid again on those contracts. So we're asking all the contractors to sharpen their pencils and come back and show us the extent to which they can reduce those actual contracts and not assume any increases or neutral, but we'd actually like to see cost savings from them. This assumes $400,000, which frankly, we think is very conservative. We think we can accomplish more through that, but this is a conservative number for the upcoming year.
And the last two items really go back to the heart of the approach we took this year, is reduction of discretionary programs of $3.2 million and reduction in priority or essential programs of about $900,000. Again, those will be coming back to you individually with each department in detail. For example, Park and Rec, which will bring, come to you first on Wednesday, they broke their functions or programs down to 80 different programs and divided up the cost of doing all those programs and what the service level implications are of reducing those programs. Again, that's a completely different approach than we've done in the past, where it's just straight cuts. This is actually a programmatic-based view of how we reduce our services. So lastly, all those estimates put together, assuming they were all the way we have proposed them, we'd come back with a balanced budget with a small surplus of $250,000.
We should note, Bob mentioned discretionary programs of $3.252. That assumed we took all of the programs, reduced all of the programs the departments had categorized as discretionary. We then, in order to balance the budget, had to go past that into the programs that were labeled priority. The programs were ranked by the departments and their staff based on essential priority and discretionary. So we had anticipated eliminating all the discretionary programs and then moving into the priority programs to the tune of $879,000. Now, the priority programs were far larger than $879,000. I forget what the number was, but--
Balance of the--
Yeah, it was millions of dollars in those programs categorized as being priority. This would eliminate about $900,000 of the priority programs. Again, you'll get more detail as we go through department by department.
Jim, as we go through the departments one by one, you'll look for our buy-off on the elimination of all the discretionary--
Yes.
And some of the priority--
That's correct.
--items.
That's correct.
We'll do that as we move along and then see what it is.
Plan by program.
And you'll give us updates as we go through where we're at--
Mm-hmm, yes.
From where you had to begin with.
Yes.
Each department will, when they bring you their budgets, they'll show you the, how they're broken down into the essential priority and discretionary and what was then eliminated and what the service level implications are for those eliminations.
The programs categorized as priority equal about $18,700,000. So this would be 800, roughly 900,000 of almost $19 million in programs labeled as priority by the various departments.
Right.
Or in the alternative, we'll decide not to cut those priority programs or discretionary.
That's right.
That's going to be up to us.
That's right.
We're not ready to go there yet.
And overall, as we've looked at means for balancing the budget, we have wanted to go past balancing it to give you some capacity to do what Mr. Quintero has indicated. So rather than kind of tie you into, you don't have any choice, and if you decide to put something back in here, you've got to go find something else to cut, our objective has been to move past just a balanced budget, but actually give you some capacity so you can make those policy decisions and not feel hemmed in.
And that's what the surplus is intended to do.
And that's what you'll see on the next page, the projected surplus of $251,000. Plus, you'll have some policy questions for you. We mentioned the GRA loan repayment, and my recommendation that you put half of that increased payment over in the CIP. You could make a decision that the discretionary or priority programs are more important. You could make a determination, there was another item that we, oh, it's up here, okay, the GRA loan repayment. The police augmentation fund, we're utilizing $1 million of it. There's an additional $2 million out there, you could decide to utilize that. The Rose Float incorporated in here is that the Rose Float and the city's contribution to it would become an economic development program because it has citywide economic development promotional benefits.
Why isn't the Rose Float Fund or whatever you call it, why isn't that considered one of the discretionary programs? Why isn't it just on that same list?
It is one of the discretionary programs, yes.
Oh, it is? But you just pulled it out here as--
We pull it out here because this is one of those programs that could be shifted over to economic development if redevelopment survives.
I see.
One of the concerns is redevelopment may not be there, in which case you don't have an economic development program anymore.
Are we going to have, for the CIP and for that amount of money that you're recommending that we allocate, are we going to have an outline of all of the projects that that money would fund for the year?
You'll have all, you'll have an outline of all the projects that the departments would like to fund from the CIP. There is not enough resources to fund all of them. In fact, there's enough resources, if we make the $1.5 million transfer, to maybe fund a small fraction of them. So we'll go through the CIP, sort of department by department, and all the projects that are in it.
Okay.
Again, this is a recap of items Jim just talked about, the addition of the $1.5 million if we chose to put that back into the general fund and potential use of the additional $2 million of the police augmentation fund. Your study session calendar, obviously today is the first one on the 25th. We go again this Wednesday and then jump to May 10th, and then continue on all the way till June if needed for additional study sessions. It's a considerable amount of time, but we wanted to block out enough time for going through the various departments and looking at all the different programs. Hopefully, we won't need it all, but it's there if we do. So at that point, it's basically questions or comments or any other input you may have on the direction we take in this budget year.
Okay, I think I would like to go to the public first and hear from them, and then we can have questions and comments from the council. First speaker, Nick Friesen.
Madam Mayor, Councilperson, staff, and the deputy public. I'd like to start off with a common vision of the staff for adopting the procedure of a programmatic prioritizing letting the office. A long time in coming, it very central. I still have some concerns--
Still have some concerns and a question. Concerns deal first with spending, overall spending, the year-to-year trends. We see a little of this in this presentation, and hopefully you'll get into the details. But it's very troubling what has happened in the last decade, even adjusted for inflation. Payrolls have gone up, in my opinion, exorbitantly. That's because you've raised the base pay, you've raised the number of members on staff, and worse, the add-ons that you've allowed through your union contracts, based on bonuses, promotions, especially those just prior to retirement, overtime being added into the base pay, and the pension increases. Those are unconscionable, in my opinion. Second concern is excessive benefits for the staff, in no particular order, but starting with paying for educational courses. Overall, that's a good thing, but specifically, are those courses work and city-related? There are classic examples of where they are not. That shouldn't be paid for. Healthcare, you have Cadillac plans for your employees. That needs to be reviewed. Performance bonuses. Until I heard the council and Mr. Starburg talking about performance bonuses, I didn't realize such a thing existed in government at any level. I think this is inappropriate. Either your people are doing their job, or you should get rid of them for cause. The final concern I have is in your use of metrics. I'm sure that you do. Yet, after years of questioning, what are those metrics? What is the performance? How does this year compare to last year? How do you expect next year to compare to this year? And similarly, what are you doing? Because the last point I have is you need some transparency. Transparency leads to trust. It hasn't been transparent, in my opinion, and therefore, I don't trust you. Thank you.
Thank you. Herbert Milano.
Mayor Friedman, members of the city council and city staff, my name is Herbert Milano. This city council could choose to take a long-term view of the budget process and reform the systems that are currently in place, and in the process, frame the problem on core principles of justice and truth and social outcomes. And I think that's what I found missing in today's presentation with regard to how And I think that's what I found missing in today's presentation with regard to how does this impact socially or how does it impact the overall needs of the community. Looks to me as there, we are basically weighing two things. What are the internal fund needs with regard to the staff needs? What are the actual needs for the community? And I think the second part is what is, I think, a bit lagging. I've, I've made a couple of suggestions, and I handed some of them to you and also emailed them. It's on a, on a way of approaching a short-term approach to this. It's an approach that I've seen used in the city of Long Beach. It's a proportional allocation of the shortfall. And basically what it does, it takes the overall shortfall in the general fund, and let's assume for the sake of simplicity that it's 20 million. And you basically look at the proportion that each department has in the overall budget. So if, for example, Parks and Rec make up only 4%, they take up 4% of the shortfall. If police take up 30% of the budget, they take 30% of that shortfall. It's a very simplistic approach, but it's a starting point that you might want to consider. A more, a more fair approach might be to take a look at the trends that we have had in the past few years and how these departments have grown. And then you allocate the shortage based upon those trends, the trend with regard to their increases in the past, let's say, eight to 10 years. This gives you a top-level view of how to approach an allocation as opposed to going from the detail up. But what you're going to find is that the changes in the pension and the changes in the, or the increased benefit cost have increased the overall cost of all the departments. So when you try to allocate those costs, well, you have those costs built in heavily weighing on those departments. And what we're finding in these solutions that we've been reducing capital improvements as a way of balancing the budget, we're reducing programs, and we're increasing the transfers from the electrical utility. I think that we need to rethink this whole process by looking at a more simplified version and then working down from it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to questions and comments from the council.
First thing I'd like to ask my colleagues is, and as we go forward, this is a broad view that we're taking of the budget process, whether there are any sacred cows. Are there any issues or topics that you absolutely put on the table and say, I refuse to even discuss the particular item, fund, department, et cetera? So...
For me...
Because I think we need to hear that. I mean...
I will not accept any cuts to the libraries.
So, I guess the question is, we're not discussing the cuts right now, but the discussion of the, so you don't even want to discuss libraries?
I do want to discuss libraries, allocation of resources, but not decrease in their balances.
Okay. My question now, my question now is not to decide what department or fund we're going to cut, but what department we're going to discuss and/or plan that we want to just take off the table and say, absolutely, I don't even want to discuss this. I hope there's nothing that's completely...
There's nothing. You can't take anything off the table. You don't have the information to do that.
But you categorize as only as department cuts. I don't think there should be any sacred cows in the entire budget strategy or process as we go through it.
And I think, and I appreciate that. I think that's the way we should look at this, that we should be willing to at least look at ideas and discuss them on their merits, whether we, you know, will balance the pain versus the gain. That being said, I have a few things that I'd like to have come back and discuss. The first thing is the entire PERS system in which an employee can retire from the city of Glendale, obtain a full pension, and go work for another entity, governmental entity, and obtain a full salary from that entity, otherwise known as double-dipping. I think that the concept, the premise of a pension is to pay someone a sum of money when they are no longer able to work or no longer choose to work. Now, I don't know what ramifications that has in our PERS rates, but I would, I would like to discuss that. It just doesn't seem fair. There's a particular former head of a department that retired at a very extravagant pension who is now working for another entity, receiving another extravagant salary, extravagant in my terms, and I'm in the, I'm in the private sector. I'd like to discuss that, and that's perhaps the most egregious example, but I'd like to see what that means for us and whether we have any power in the city to either ask for a, a contribution, a return of some of that pension, or to address it with PERS itself, or to address it on a legal challenge, that the basic premise is that pension is for those who are not working. And to obtain a pension while you're receiving a full-time salary from another organization just doesn't seem right. That's just one. I would like to know the premises and the information that this council had. This may be a longer term, obviously not being able to, maybe not being able to be resolved in the next few weeks before we do our 11, 12 budget, but I would like to know what was the cause of the increase in pension benefits in that 2000, 2001 timeframe where additional pension benefits were given to the public employees presumably at no cost. However, we see that that certainly is imposing a cost on the city fund at this point. I'd like to know whether that was legal. I'd like to know whether there was adequate compensation, whether there was adequate consideration for the employees back to the city when the city bestowed the benefit on the employees. I'd like to know what information was given to the council members. I think three of them are on the council now. Some say, this isn't what we learned about. They told us this would be a no-cost item, add infinitum, and it's certainly coming back to biting us. I'd like to look into that. That may take a little bit more time, though. I would like to see a potential sale of assets that the city has, land in particular that we've paid a lot of money for, sale or lease of those assets to get us either a one-time fund or a continuing income stream. I would like to see ramifications of our dipping into our general fund reserve to cover some of these, these deficit items. I would like to see the, in terms of the fee, the fee departments, fee revenues, an accident fee, imposing an accident fee on those vehicles that are involved in accidents in the city and spreading the cost of our fire, our police, any public works that have to go and block the street or turn off hydrants or anything like that. I'd like to see a bicycle license. We've done a lot of improvements for bicycles. I know I'm going to hear it, I'm going to hear hell for this because I support bicycles, but, and we've talked about the Maple Park drive-through, the Greenway and all that. I mean, let's talk about it and see if any other cities impose any sort of bicycle licenses. I would also like to see, in light of the passage of Measure S, whether there's any cost savings we can back out of with the GUSD. I know we were talking about funding a lot of their artificial turf fields. They just got a huge chunk of money. How much was it? 300 million or something? How much? $250 million? Do we need to commit our funds to build that artificial soccer field worth $2 or $3 million, I think, a pop, when they appear to be flush with funds and the voters have told them that they would like the school board to, to invest and to make those improvements? Let's see, who else can I upset at the moment? And of course, a discussion of the programmatic cuts, which we'll have for a later day. I'm sure we'll get into that a little bit more, but these are sort of broad items. I'm not saying I'm in favor of those, but I think it's something we should put on the table, discuss, and either chop it down as being impractical, burdensome, draconian, or something we could look into.
Okay, who wants to go next? Mr. Quintero?
I want to, and I hope we can do it by Wednesday, I'm sure it exists. I'd like to have a flowchart of the department's personnel, that department head, the assistant director, and all of the different, all of the different employees and what it is that they do, et cetera.
Okay, next.
We've come a long way in the budgets that I've worked on in 14 years. When I worked for the Corps of Engineers, I did federal budgets for over 10 years, project manager for another 20 years. The process is being used this time. Essential priority and discretionary is a similar process that I used with the Corps of Engineers. I think it's the right way to go. And it's pretty hard to say what you want or don't want at this time. We have to start the process, going through every department, looking and find if we like, what is discretionary and being eliminated, what is priority? Is it across the board, or do you take more out of one department than another? We're appearing to do this so far without any furloughs or without any additional layoffs or going into the general fund. And I'd like to know another city around that can say that. Doesn't mean the budget's going to pass this way, but I think it's a darn good start. Economy someday in our lifetime is going to turn around and revenue streams are going to come back. But the one thing about tight times like we've been going through, it forces you into looking how to be more efficient. And I think over the last few years, in terms of how the budgets are set up and the transfers made and departments, everything being reorganized and services, is something that has a lot of value to it. Even when the revenues turn around, we'll have a better process of operating as a city in mind. You're talking over 2,000 city workers. That's a lot of people, a lot of services being provided. You're talking, gosh, we're going to probably see today about three-quarter of a billion-dollar budget in this city. That's a lot to get a handle on and to efficiencies, efficiently operate. But I'm happy with what I saw today in terms of the process that we're going to go through. So I would like to just get on with it. And then as we go along, if there's additional things we need, we'll get it. But it's pretty hard to sit here and chop on anything until you start to get into the details. Thank you.
If you want to, you'd last.
No, it's okay. Thanks. I received this PowerPoint Saturday afternoon, and I didn't know I received it until Mr. Najarian at, at the event told me of that, that we received it. I'd like to receive information beforehand, so at least I have some sort of information I can, I can work on some background on this stuff. I don't know what's going on tomorrow, and I haven't received anything regarding tomorrow's presentation. Again, I'd like to have all the information beforehand, at least a couple of days before. And, and I don't know who was working on Saturday to be emailing us.
The young man down at the end down there.
Thank you very much. But, but again, it's a serious issue for me. I would like to have the information way beforehand and not a day before because it doesn't do me any good and I don't want to come here and look at stuff, look at especially these budget issues with, with no background information. I'm sure the rest of my colleagues have gone through this the past four years I haven't been here, but I would like to do my own analysis in, before I come to these council meetings for budgets.
If I can interrupt for, for just a second, we will do our darn best to do that. We worked late Friday night to try and get that done and worked on it Saturday morning.
I'm surprised that you're working on this Friday, actually. Shouldn't this be ready a couple of weeks ago?
Well, you recall, we just did our schedule and we, we began to put, we were, we've been working on numbers literally every week with the team, trying to assemble the strategies and look to see how we're going to balance the budget. Our goal had been to get the packet out to you on Friday. We were literally meeting on Friday, making changes to the presentation, looking at the numbers, and as you know, Jason and Bob worked over the weekend, so it was much later to you than we had anticipated. But weeks in advance, I don't, I'm not, the schedule isn't going to permit us to get your information weeks in advance. It's just...
Not weeks, at least a couple of working days so I can, so I can...
For example, Wednesday's meeting is going to, it's not tomorrow, it's Wednesday, by the way. Wednesday's meeting will be on, which department? Community Services and Parks. We'll see where they are with their information and try and get it to you today if we can. But I see Jeff shaking his head. It's going to be difficult to do.
Well, you know, I'm sure you're getting, you've been getting ready for the budget for a while now, and you're putting the numbers together just now, two days before the budget hearing?
No, we're not. We've been putting the numbers together since before January and literally meeting on a weekly basis for hours trying to figure out how to put this budget together.
You can test it from...
But assembling it in a form that makes sense to you, that you can utilize, is, is what, is what makes it difficult. These first departments, like Parks and Rec, Community Services, they're, they're having to quickly assemble the information we've been working on for quite some time and put it in a form to present to you. The later departments, they've got more time, but these early ones, they're going to be under a gun.
Okay.
We'll, we'll do the best we can. We understand what you'd like, and we want you to have the information well in advance as well.
Okay, second, I'd like to look at the whole budget. This is the general fund. I believe that without looking at the whole budget for the whole, for the city, including all the other funds, if you're giving us a general overview of the overall budget, I think it should include everything, not just the general fund. I would like to see comparative analysis. I saw it in, I saw it in the CAFR. There's nine years of comparative analysis in the CAFR. You can just throw those numbers in there. There's also performance indicators there. I would like to see the performance indicators, and I'd like to see them by department. And I would like to see the budget by department as well. I know governmental accounting is based on fund accounting, but I would like to see a departmental financial statement where, where the revenues are coming from for each department, where the expenditures are going before all this internal service funds and all of that. I would like to see the salaries, the base salaries for the departments separated, the benefits separated, and the overtime separated in the budget. I would like to analyze the overtime and the P cards, as I've said many times before. I'd like to know how much is being spent on the P cards on an annual basis. I would like an analysis of the internal service funds. I saw that you're referring to it as a department. Maybe you're, you're using it as a department for accounting purposes, but I don't believe it's a department. It's just an accounting device that you're using. I would like, I would like to see the analysis, what is being charged and on what. I would also like to look at post-employment, post-employment expenses.
I'm sorry, a what?
Post-employment expenditures, if there are any.
Post-appointed expenditures?
Post-employment.
Oh, post-employment expenditures. Pardon me.
I would like to, today there were, there were two consultants mentioned. How many consultants do we have working on this budget? I'd like to know what the cost is. Police augmentation fund, we discussed. I just want to reemphasize that I'd like to know which departments were the funds taken out of to put in the police augmentation fund. I'd like to review the policy of hiring freezes. I don't believe in hiring freezes. If you have 80 employees who are, who are frozen for a year, I don't think you need those employee, I don't think you need those positions. I would like to see them eliminated. And that's it for now. If I can, if I can have this information, I would appreciate it.
Okay, and for me, I agree with Councilmember Najarian that we should not have sacred cows in terms of our conversation. We can certainly have them in terms of our willingness to cut or not cut, but I think everything should be open to discussion. And I think that even departments that we don't want to see a reduction in services, such as libraries, still can find ways of being more efficient possibly and still deliver those services. So I believe that we need to go in with an open mind towards the entire city. I said this before, and I'm told that we can do some of this this year, but it's going to take a while to develop the analysis. But as we go through the programs, as, for the future, not just for this year, we need to start developing a way of analyzing the effectiveness of those programs and of judging them. It can't just be that they... It can't just be that they sound good. We need to see what the long-term effects of those programs are, who are they serving, and not just who are they serving, but are they really helping those people, and are they really the best programs to give the services that they're trying to deliver? For example, we have some programs that are for at-risk youth, which we're always very reluctant to cut and which sound great, but I've never seen an analysis of what happens to those youth later on. Is it really helping them? Are they really staying out of trouble more than the general population? We need to know that sort of, we need to have that analysis to be able to evaluate whether the cost of those programs are worth it, and are they working? If we want to achieve a certain goal, are they really the best way to do that? So I understand that for this year, it might be difficult, because some of these programs are going to take year-by-year analysis, but we need to start developing that in order to be able to spend our money wisely. One of the members of the public, and by the way, I do thank the public for coming today, and I hope that we see more participation from the public as we go through this process. One of the members of the public mentioned evaluating the educational reimbursements that we give, and I would like to see what educational, what programs are being paid for, and what they do in terms of employee performance. I don't know if you have a way of measuring that at this point, but I would like to see if the educational programs have led to either higher performance that's been evaluated, or people being able to move up more quickly through the ranks. What benefit does the city get from that reimbursement? I would like a full evaluation of PERS and CalPERS, and our various options, and any options that we have in terms of pension. It's my understanding that we're not giving performance bonuses. Someone mentioned that, so I believe that's been gone for a number of years, so just want to make that, make the public aware of that. And just for Mr. Najarian, buried in that long Safe and Healthy Streets document that we had was a voluntary bicycle license program, and what the benefit that people would get, the enticement to get them to sign up for that, is that they would have their bikes registered, so if they're stolen, they can be recovered. So hopefully, that's something that will bring in at least a little bit of revenue that can go towards that bicycle infrastructure. Otherwise, I think that this is an encouraging start. I look forward to hearing all of the suggestions of my colleagues and of staff. This is going to be a painful year of cuts. Certainly, a lot of programs that the public has come to expect are going to be eliminated. But it is a time for belt-tightening, and that's why it is so important that we have a way of evaluating the effectiveness of these various programs. And I hope that as much of, as much as that, as we can do this year, that we can have that discussion, because otherwise, we look at the intent of a program and make our cut, make our desires of whether to cut or not based on the intent, without knowing whether we're actually fulfilling that intent, which makes it doubly difficult. Mr. Quintero, did you have a comment?
Yeah. Well, I have a comment. I'm not willing to go down that road and to say that we are going to cut programs that the public wants. We're not even close to that yet, so that's number one. Number two, when were the last performance bonuses given? What year was that? '09?
Been at least two, I think going on three years now. I froze them at the start of the economic downturn, which is back in '08, '09. Eight, nine, we discontinued them.
Okay. But anyway, I think we have a long, long way to go before, or I have a long, long way to go before I commit to cutting services to the residents of Glendale. There's an awful lot of options that we can take before we get to that point.
Well-taken. Thank you. Are there any other comments before we adjourn?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Just a couple of comments. Just going through some of the statements made. Comment on reserves. The general fund currently is at a 30% reserve. That equates to about $49 million. The council adopted a floor of 30%, so we're there. Going beyond that would be contrary to the council adopted policy, but that is an option. Looking at PERS, we have a contract with PERS. I don't know, that may be more of a legal implication, how we would do that. Not sure how we would become a non-PERS agency. I assume it's possible. I'm not sure what the steps would be in that, but we can take a look at that. P-cards, comment on P-cards from Mr. Menuchyan. We have information, however you want to look at it. I think there's about 345 purchasing cards issued throughout the city. That was a, actually, was encouraged to issue P-cards when the program started to ease of buying parts and needed things in the field. We have the expenditures of what all those items are, so we can provide that as we move forward. Again, that was a program that was encouraged, and we've issued those to a lot of employees for purchasing needs. We have that information. Educational programs, we can get with Matt Doyle and look at those and bring those back. Other items we'll go through as, and look at everything you've mentioned.
Okay.
Anything else for us? That's all we have.
Move to adjourn?
Thank you for your time. Next study session is Wednesday, beginning at 9:00 a.m.
Thank you.
Thank you.